Vice President.
It's just the ball.
Oh, that's right. Okay. It's the ball.
We have approval of the agenda. Is there any changes anyone would like to make or suggest? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Kinser?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mohollan?
Yes. And audience to visitors, did we get anything? Nothing on that? On the public hearing, do we have to open that or do we pause for it or how is that?
Just ask, say, right now we're having a public hearing on the budget. Is there anybody that we should speak to?
So at this point of the board meeting, we are having a public hearing on the 2018-2019 budget. Would anybody like to speak towards that? Any board members want to? Hearing none, we will go to the next item, the treasurer's report.
Yes, presented. The only thing I did add for this one, I just sent our education fund, I added a line for the HRA and that's our health numbers and our power in there, so it's a different checking account for that, so you'll see that. That's what I'm saying about that.
Any questions on that? Superintendent's report.
Yeah, I got just a few items here. We'd like to publicly thank a generous family who would wish to remain anonymous, but they donated the upper elementary and the middle school $1,000 to use for students that are in need to offset any fees or student charges for such things as field trips or school resources. So very, very nice to have that. Want to let the board know that our curriculum audit happens first, second, and third, which is Monday and Tuesday of next week. Our pavement is finally done around the concession stand in our little brief window of nice weather last week, we got that done. And I want to thank the high school booster club for all that they did because they did a nice job of refurbishing and painting our concession stands and areas and fixing that up. They did a great job on that. As I mentioned last week in our board report, we do have grubs on the football field. We had to put down another round of pesticides on it for this week, but we'll continue to be aggressive to make sure we get the grub problem taken care of and do the best we can to make sure that that field is repaired and replaced so that it's ready to go. We've got another home football game, homecoming this week, and then we have two more later down the line here, so we're going to try to keep that football field protected. And the last thing is, is after tonight's meeting, I head to the IASA conference down in Springfield, which is the superintendent's conference down there, where I'm sure we'll hear a lot of talking about the funding model, ESSA, and the changes to the upcoming school report cards. So that's it. Any questions?
Did want to acknowledge in our consent agenda, it was Pop and Grove State Bank, again.
Yes.
I don't know how many years they've done that, but appreciate the, I guess they call it that milestone of range or agreement.
Yep.
Where they reward all spring and winter sports, so thank you for that as well. Committee reports. Policy?
Policy, we met on September 4th and we talked about there's a checklist for superintendent employee contract. We, the committee decided we should use this as an exhibit, if not for ourselves, future boards to have a reference when the point comes if they need to ever hire another superintendent. Policy 4.80, we recommended retaining the capital assets paragraph. It just gave us an extra layer in an audit of protection, and we thought it's best to just leave it in there. And then the other ones, we voted, we, the committee felt we should just approve them as press presented them. We're going to offer, we're going to offer the accelerated placement program, policies 6, 1 through 5. And Dr. Greenley is going to meet with the administration and develop a formalized plan, evaluation, and referral process for that. And then as far as policy 6, that 220 bring your own technology, the district is going to adapt this policy and our current user agreement will still be in effect and the IT department will ensure device compatibility.
And all of those policies are on for a first reading?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Business services?
Business services, we met on the 9th. We discussed bus purchases and leasing and some different options, Melissa laid out some scenarios, we had some good conversations about that. We had a conversation about some of the classroom splits versus technologies, when it's appropriate split classes and how we determine whether, what the emphasis on the academic side versus that technology. We got an update on where we were for online registration. We got an update on AP classes and where some of those are on a piece of skeleton.
Any questions on, I guess either of those two? Facilities?
We haven't met.
Okay. I had an item that we were going to talk about solar panels and things like that, just kind of, and I wanted to get a chance maybe to talk with you about that and...
I have no problems with that.
Let me, I'll talk to you afterwards and kind of maybe set up a meeting afterwards. Okay. CIA?
We met September 11th, talked about long-term technology plan and had a pretty long discussion about that. We're going to do a survey to see what the needs of the teacher and the districts are, kind of a highness guy where we want to be and kind of go from there. Also talked about the whole day grade classrooms, more recommendations were brought forth at this time, so a few more discussions later. No meetings planned yet.
No meetings planned. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kinser?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mohollan?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the 2018-2019 budget.
It's kind of as presented, but is there any changes, modifications?
There were some, a few changes that I made since last year. One of them is I moved some of the evidence-based funding money from the education fund down to the IR social security fund, just more for cash flow purposes. Because that, we get evidence-based money every month, so that just helps keep, make sure that our, we're paying that, that month too. Transportation, I did increase the line item for bus purchases from $200,000 to that $550,000. I'm not sure what we're going to do with bus purchases, but that gives us the option to watch this year by those buses that is already in the budget that we need to do. And that, that money was sitting against in excess of funds, so it doesn't impact that budget, which is, I just moved it into the financial side. The capital project, I increased that by $75,000. When I originated the budget, I missed the back of how you were, which is already been moved, so I just added that in, that's, that's been there. And there was just some rushing of the mind that I didn't have the right numbers in the budget, so most of that was just minor, being that on there. So the budget's here, this is the state budget that we'll send it to the counties, so if you guys have any questions on that. I also included in the back of your packets today, outlining preventative route, cost per student, first full summary. So this is in the back of your packet. I've gone through it, which is a little bit more digging and breakdown of some stuff for special ed versus regular ed. It's still kind of coming down because 70 to 80% of our budget is salary, it's still kind of coming down to that, even the fact that it's changing what per student, per cost is. I changed the moment to August 1st, so that changed some of the numbers too. So take a look at it, if you guys have a chance, let me know if you have other questions. If you guys want me to drill in any further, just let me know.
A few different angles too.
Yeah, I tried to look at it, but there's lots of, we can look at the data, so just help with that, other suggestions.
Thank you.
And when this comes, when we do it in October for the school report card, I only looked at the education funds, I really looked at just the raw data of that school. When we send it out for the school part three back in October, it's going to look at almost all of our funds, it's going to split district funds to all the schools. So just a heads up, this is just draft budget numbers and this is only an education fund, so it's just kind of an outline of what we're doing.
Do we have any questions on the budget? Anybody or? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the budget as presented?
Make a motion to approve the budget as presented?
A second.
Have a motion in a second, one more chance for discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mohollan?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Kinser?
Yes. Bus purchases and leasing.
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa. Melissa's been doing a lot of bids and getting information back from our different vendors on that. She's had a chance to compare three different companies with what they have in stock right now, and I'll turn it over to Melissa.
So from the business committee meeting, we had some options that I presented, we kind of decided that the best thing to look at right now was to be, to, we're starting a three-year cycle that will move to a five-year purchasing cycle. So the first three years, we're going to do a combination of bus purchases and leases, and then that will replace our entire fleet, and then we can go into much bus purchases so that we have a newer fleet, we're getting more reimbursement, all of that. So I looked at leasing four this year and buying six. When we went out for the quotes, they came back late last week, and we found Midwest came back, they only had 72, 73, 71 passenger buses.
71, 72.
72. And we were trying to get 77, just because that gives us more flexibility with our routes, and they're all hydraulic brakes. And that was a question that we talked about, hydraulic versus air brakes. There was another company, American Bus, they're out of Oklahoma, they do have 77 passenger buses with air brakes. They're 2,000, I can't change it. They're the same price, but we pay for essentially the same bus next year. And so I feel like the price is kind of high for what we would be getting, so that's we pay that price for that bus next year. So that, and plus we have to go down to Oklahoma to get it, so that was kind of a red flag for me. And then the other one was Central States, and that's a newer dealer, and they quoted us new buses at $85,000, which I felt like is kind of out of our budget right now for what we were looking at with six buses. So my recommendation is to wait a little bit, to table this. When I've talked to other people, other business and transportation managers, they've said that the leases come in about December, October, or December, January timeframe, November maybe, and those dealers will know their stack for that summer, and so they'll have more buses that we can choose from, better quantity and all of that. And so that I think we can make a more informed decision if we wait a little bit, we can then purchase some and then they can deliver it.
We'll have a larger selection to choose from, November, December, January, to move on 10 buses roughly then. Thoughts for what y'all are going to mean?
Any questions? I did some research on the hydraulic versus air brakes. It's, I, the big thing that came away was sometimes the hydraulic brakes can be cheaper upfront versus the air brakes. But over time, the air brakes, maintenance, you may save some money on maintenance versus hydraulic. There is a different certification to get an air brake. I talked to Midwest today and he said that they found it, sometimes people will get that and then go drive a semi or something because they have the air, you know, but that's, that was, but we've had air brakes, so it was kind of a, to each their own kind of a thing with the hydraulic versus the air. The biggest thing is that the air brakes, the maintenance cost may be longer, lower down the road, so.
Not much lower, I mean, especially if we're only keeping them for five years now, probably wouldn't see that much increase in maintenance on those.
Potentially you may not, depending on, Rockford just did a big, they've always done hydraulic, they're shifting now to the air brakes. They found that the miles per brake change essentially, they can go longer than they could with the hydraulic brakes.
Didn't they say it was like, what, a saving of, they went so far as to say it was a savings of $1,000 a tire?
Potentially, I think with like the maintenance or the people's, the workers and, sorry, like all the cars and all of that kind of stuff, so when you look at all of them together, we prefer a job that can save some, some odd money. So they're all going to air brakes, and so it seems like Illinois typically is a hydraulic brake state, but they're starting to kind of shift more towards air brakes. The country as a whole though is kind of a brake buses, but Illinois is a hydraulic. Any questions?
So the rationale between United One, all the buses, 77 passenger, knowing that they have longer wheel bases and that they'd potentially be running around in Anchester Road, trying to back into driveways with longer wheel bases.
The thought is that with the short drivers, we have a few routes, like the high school end, it has to have a 77 passenger bus to go down. So we felt like if we ever had to combine our routes down more, having, we have a 77 passenger bus, that gives us more options if we had to put more kids on a bus. That's not preferred, just because when we get more kids on a bus, it makes you have those years or whatever, but longer rides, all of that, that was just my, my thinking on it, was that that gave us more flexibility for route.
Yeah, when we talked about that, we were talking a little bit about, gosh, if they're all similar, it's just one less, you know, variable to have in your back pocket to get a large route somewhere.
Yeah, try to back it along those 77 passenger.
No, but when you said that, I-
Drive way up by your dad's place.
I can imagine that, yeah. When you said that-
There is a reason, right, it was blended fleet. We specifically bought equipment, pushed this in the routes. And as far as blending or combining routes, we do push the 72 and 76 to 26s.
Right.
But it's a lot longer, it's payable, so.
Good consideration though.
No, I think I didn't make out that I never knew of us, so if we could definitely look at blending our fleet.
Definitely see the need for needing bigger buses, whole Android, for going to Anchester, you know, the middle school routes coming out of Pop and Grove and Anchester, I guess I'd encourage you to think about people trying to get those buses around Anchester, Leroy Townships, Moon Township, all over the country, you know.
No, and I appreciate that.
It's not easy.
No, good point.
So are we okay with the fleets and stands and we went and sold it, right?
Yeah.
I mean, there was some concern that staff, I think that some of the equipment was not safe, right? And they were telling the staff driving the equipment that it wasn't safe? Were we past that?
We talked to Scott about-
Dad has not come back to us that it's not safe. We were told it is safe. It's going through safety lane.
I mean, Melissa and I had that conversation.
And I did not come to any conclusion that it was not.
We're regular with safety lanes, we're passing safety checks, we know that we're going to have maintenance expense coming. We know we've got different engine things that need to be worked on and just other maintenance things, so, but we know that even though if we wait and push this back, you know, we've got a little better surplus to look at, we have confidence based on our discussion with Scott that we'll make sure that it's, you know, we'll keep it running. The idea behind it was, is just having a larger surplus to choose from, and then if we choose to go to the blended fleet, maybe that's not a bad idea. And hopefully try to get some maximized bang for the buck there too.
Are you thinking, Ed, that if there were, you can't get the number of buses you want if you pick out your worst two or three and there's buses like that available at least?
I mean, I just want to make the process, I do have this question, more rationale for it.
Okay.
I just don't want to have unsafe equipment out there.
Well, yeah.
Us telling people that we're switching buses or we're switching routes, because they were, it's not safe.
And we did, we talked-
That's not an option.
Yeah, we talked about the safety, and we felt like we're okay. The other pieces too, is I think in our, in our mind too, is that if, if somebody really felt strongly, let's at least go get two or three right now. I think we can live with that too, we understand. And air brakes and hydraulic isn't the difference, a Coke and Pepsi, I don't know. Hydraulic brakes are good too, you know, brings a different, different set with it, so I'm thinking.
The point that Melissa made about folks that get air brakes, they open those doors to a lot bigger career opportunities, we essentially train people, they can do something that they call a lot more on.
Yeah. And that's a nationwide-
I think that's something you guys have a job to do.
Yeah, and that's a nationwide problem, I know, yeah.
And if I feel like we get, I mean, we get some private buses, we need, you know, we can't keep them maintaining, we'll come back with some other buses, okay, then I have to make sure of that.
Just to be clear, our drivers today do have the air brake endorsement? We do have air brakes today, okay?
Not all of them.
No, it's kind of a split fleet, we do have hydraulic and air.
Oh, you do, okay.
So our hope is to come back with something and aggressively November, you know, because once they start to see what leases are going to be turned back in, then they start having a better idea of what their inventory is, and we can start to look.
Yeah, I'll keep updating you and I'll keep in touch with the bus companies to see what we have.
That's aggressive, so, which I, which I hope to be, and that's kind of why we wanted to stay here.
So as a agenda item, would this drop off the agenda unless you came back and said, I've got two buses I need to replace, then it would come back on it? Or do we leave this, you wouldn't leave this on until next summer, would you?
I think we would, if something's on your side.
Okay.
And I can just update you guys, so I can know if any buses have come or, and we could even like decide by the stages that, say Midwest has a couple buses that we think that work, then I'll write those up as a two places.
Okay. All right. AP courses?
Uh, yes. This was brought up both at business as well as curriculum. So this is more of an agenda, informational agenda item. As you remember in May, Mrs. Perdazza and Mr. Augustine talked with the board regarding discussions and recommendations. Moving forward, beginning this year, we made AP tests optional for our students. Teachers will be taking advantage of professional development now, and on October 1st and 2nd, our AP teachers are going to a workshop. They will be attending that. We have budgeted for that, we're also encouraging them to take other opportunities, for tutoring opportunities outside of school for students, and that's, that's part of the intentions too. Our teachers have already met once to review our student individual data, which we have, we do not have the state comparisons yet, but we just have our individual student data back, as well as to talk about strategies to help increase student achievement. They'll continue to meet, they're going to meet again then after they get done with the conference here. I know one of the things that they've been talking about is a few more frequent quizzes to check for reading outside of the classroom, because one of the big requirements with AP classes is the amount of reading that you do outside of the classroom, so that was a small thing there. I have shared with the board the number of, well, I think I shared it with you guys at the business committee when we were looking at the numbers of students that were taking AP classes. The only thing that I have knew that kind of came back is our individual numbers on how our kids did that got three or higher on those AP exams. I don't have it back from the state. State will come in October with the state report card and all those stuff, and then in October I'll present you our test results, both from MAPS, Park, and, pretty much if the state gets this out, we'll try to have that presentation for the whole board in October. It's usually late October when they get that out. And in your packet, I did update the summary chart that we used last year, so now you can kind of look back to what we had in 216 and 217. Couple of the high points that I would, I would pick out is eight of our 14 kids that had calculus, had three or better on their exams, and three of our eight students that had late English Lit also did, did well there too. Overall though, I'd say the trend stays similar. We have, we'd like to see more kids passing those AP exams with three, fours, and fives. That's not just a North Boone problem, that is a national problem for all of us. We also see our students score or get higher grades than what we see sometimes with those AP tests, and that's something we'll continue to work on and focus on as we go to, so. I'll take any questions, comments, thoughts from the board, that's a rough update of where we're at.
What is the last thing that kids can drop AP classes?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
We get an update.
I'll, I'll let you know where that is, sure.
The plan is that no matter how low a class is, they're going to get offered through it this year.
Don't, yeah, they'll get offered through this year. If that is something we want to come back and talk about, I know one of the things that was recommended by the high school teachers last year was looking at lowering class sizes and still offering AP courses. I know, I like having as many options as we can for some of our, our students that are high achieving, like to keep them on campus for those that want to stay on campus, but, you know, if we want to talk about what the number is, like I said, it's not so much something in stone, but we've kind of used the number 15, but if that's something we want to relook at, we could have some discussion regarding that too. That's just to offer it.
Can you afford to offer a class for 10, 8 or 9 kids?
That was what, and I was just telling Mr. Kinser that, when I was superintendent previously, 15 was a rough number, we used them, and that was back when budgets were tighter, and several superintendents talked about what were you using, kind of comparing, 15 was roughly the number, we all felt was about as low as you could go and still offer it and be financially responsible, but.
Is it also appropriate for the class splits for little kids versus offering AP classes for 10 kids?
Different, it's different, and I think that there's some things that we can do for multi-grade classes that we could do better, based on some of our discussions that came out of curriculum and instruction too, that, that we don't do, and I've got some ideas off that too. So, hard to compare the two, they're, they're just, they're, they're different, different birds.
Do we need to just look at the fourth impact?
Yeah.
Any other, any other discussion? Okay, that was, no other discussion, the technology plan?
This was another informational agenda item, Mr. Havre, they asked for me to just update the board with. He wanted me to speak about, you know, when there hasn't been a long-term plan in place, how have we gone about making some of those technology decisions that we've brought forward to the board? So I put a timeline of what was purchased since, since my arrival, and let me kind of summarize it by saying with technology and our needs, all of them are discussed and analyzed, and it's analyzed in so many different forums and ways, whether it's through staff meetings, administrative meetings, technology meetings. We have administrative meetings every two weeks in the mornings, and every single agenda I have, our third bullet item is technology. And we talk about all the different functions of technology, whether it's academic and learning, support in the classroom, business functions, it's always an item on there that the administration and I discuss. There's always input coming back from staff, whether it's staff meetings or some of our curriculum committee meetings. After that meeting, I'll usually walk in, I have technology meetings in the afternoon that day. I structured it this way purposely because anything then that comes out of administrative meeting can go back to my tech staff and we can begin to work on it immediately following that, so. I guess what I would say is I kind of gave you a history and a timeline, and if you have any questions on that, about how we went about making some of those decisions the last, well, I guess three, four years now, I'll be more than happy to talk to you, but it's always been a focus and a part of each- but it's always been a focus and a part of each one of our meetings and discussions, whether it's based on our business functions of what we need for the district, whether it's curriculum needs or even student achievement and RTI. I mean, there's a lot of different aspects that technology touches the whole way. Like I said, we've always viewed it as, how do we support and how does it support what the initiatives are we've got in place that we're moving forward with, so. But if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. As I jokingly said to Mr. Haverly, it's not that I wake up and spin the wheel in the morning, but there's a lot of different avenues and information that comes with it, so. One of the things I didn't put in there, but had an impact on it, was social studies. And us bringing it back in the five, six, I mean, the seventh and eighth grade relied on technology for social studies, so.
Any questions on that report or? Thank you. Going down to new business, item A, September 2018 bills. Mr. Mohan?
Well, tonight we're not able to make communication today, we tried a couple of times, but I got here the question I had, Melissa was, built for Cashman Stella Group's $3,275 for stadium studies, stadium design, I didn't cause improvement anymore. Stadium design work, I was under the assumption that we stayed with Stella because all of the work that they were doing for us was part of their contract.
And I know, I'm not positive on that contract, but I know we asked him to do it through a facilities committee meeting, so that's why, but we could check on that.
I asked him to ask Tom before I asked Melissa.
If that's the case, that's a really old building.
Should really, because when did we talk about that? Was that February or something like that, Tom? At the facilities committee? And you brought back?
Yeah, this is what month?
Yeah, I know, I know what you're saying, yeah.
Better ask what you want to do.
I'll get you clarification on that then.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan? Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Takes us down to executive session. And I think I have three of them here. Okay. I will ask for a motion for the, to go into executive session. To consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. For collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. And the third thing is litigation, when action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that inaction is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan?
For adjournment to votes.
We're out of executive session at 7:48. Any motion in the packet?
I'm going to, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any other, any other business to come before the board? Hearing none, do I have a motion or adjourn?
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please adjourn.
Thank you guys very much.